I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed.
Be number two for you.
Good evening. So you had camaraderie without me, huh?
Yeah. So we had to talk about you, Chris.
Yeah.
And then as soon as you walked in, it was like, shh.
You're about to be wiped out. So we call the regular council meeting to order. We do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order. We have a treasurer's report on the consent agenda, our approval of the minutes of November 20th, and approved payment of the bill. So we're going to have treasurer's report, please.
Yep.
Yeah.
We need to amend the agenda. Did you get the note?
Well, when I get down to the agenda, but all right. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You want me to do that now? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got that note here. Some of them. I don't have it now. Edna, you got it?
No, but we just need to amend the agenda. They had two items.
Okay.
Um, 3.10 and 3.11. That's good for, um, what it says.
3.10 and 3.11. What's 3.10?
3.10 is an ordinance amending city code 375.030. And 3.11 is an ordinance amending city code 375.04.
That one has a typo on it. Is that okay?
I think that's what the amendment is.
It says illegally parked or stiffed. Supposed to be stopped, right?
Yeah, that'd be it, right.
Okay. So get a motion to approve those additions to the agenda. Charles makes a motion. Teresa seconds. Clarification and discussion. Call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Alan.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Okay. So I did find that now. It's 3.10 is an ordinance amending city code 375.030. And 3.11, 375.04 is it. Okay. Treasurer's report, please. Thank you, Edna.
Okay. December 4th, 2018 treasurer's report. Payable checks in the amount of $235,546.88. Major vendor checks, there are five, eight of them?
Oh, wow, they're bad.
Yeah, there are eight major vendor checks. And they come to $225,185.13. Payroll for November 30th, 2018, $148,665.42. For grand total for accounts payable and payroll of $384,212.30.
Get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Michael makes a motion. Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Okay. In paragraph three, 3.1, ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization of the revised 2018 budget for the city of St. Robert. Edna, you want to make any comments?
No, this is just, um, just the two of the classes.
Okay. So the none of them are in the hold?
Are as close, as close as we can.
Yeah. Okay. Read it as bill, please.
Bill number 18139. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization of the revised 2018 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Alan.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 18139. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement and utilization of the revised 2018 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion. Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Alan.
Yes.
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3312. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization of the revised 2018 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Teresa makes a motion. Alan sec. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay.
Back at committee, we talked about it and the committee recommended a 3% cost of living and a step increase. Of course, we have a CBA with the fire department, passed it to them. Did get a response that they agree with that. So we're ready that as a bill. 3.2, please.
Bill number 18140. An ordinance authorizing a 3% cost of living and step increase for all eligible employees.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading?
Bill number 18140. An ordinance authorizing a 3% cost of living and a step increase for all eligible employees.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Alan makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Second reading?
Bill number 18140. An ordinance authorizing a 3% cost of living and a step increase for all eligible employees.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Charles makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 3.3 is an ordinance to approve the 2019 budget, which was also discussed in council. We got the major projects, the intersection, the water connection, all those things you guys are very familiar with. And of course, pay raises in there and that kind of stuff. So Edna, you want to add anything?
The total budget of $26 million non-cu- $27,000 project budget.
Okay. At least we got the revenue to support. Okay. Balanced budget. Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 18141. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization for the 2019 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the first reading. Alan makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Second reading?
Bill number 18141. An ordinance authorizing the passage enforcement utilization of a 2019 budget for the city of St. Robert.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
3.4 is an ordinance to move the money over to pay the insurance because the fire station's on lease purchase. So this is to pay the payment for the insurance. Uh, 3.4.
Bill number 18142. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to transfer $4,317 to the industrial development authority of the city of St. Robert, Missouri for insurance policy renewal.
Got a motion on the first reading. Alan makes a motion. Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Second reading, please.
Bill number 18142. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to transfer $4,317 to the industrial development authority of the city of St. Robert, Missouri for insurance policy renewal.
Got a motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
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 Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
3.5, this is for maintenance agreement on the new handheld meter reader with Itron that we're getting from handhelds. Okay?
Oh, did we say something about having, being able to have those read from here or something?
Yeah, but that was like $400,000 and this is not that.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So we're just getting the handhelds to continue on.
Okay.
And we've got to break that up and we've got to have some more discussions before we get to that.
And this time we're going to have the tablets instead of the handhelds. And I currently believe that for maintenance or something else, your handheld is about $2,700, so it is more. And the current maintenance is a little bit of a handheld, so, because these are tablets, it's about.
Yeah, and these mesh with the new systems.
And how many are we buying?
Two.
Two? Okay.
Yeah. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 18143. An ordinance approving authorization of mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with Itron for the maintenance of city meter reader endpoint software and Mclight III equipment.
Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And John?
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3316. An ordinance approving authorization of mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with Itron for the maintenance of city meter reader endpoint software and Mclight II equipment.
Okay, got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Alan makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Okay, 3.6 is authorizing the mayor to execute the aviation project consultant supplemental agreement number one between the city of Waynesville, St. Robert, and Crawford Mill Lake, Crawford Murphy and Tilly. And if I'm not mistaken, this is for the utility.
Airport.
Yeah, temporary. Yeah. Basically, there was a project designed for the temporary terminal. It put three trailers around there out at Fort Wood. And having three trailers caused an extensive use of utilities, water sewer and everything to the back one. So that was not included in the original contract, so this is an amendment of 20, up to $20,400 of additional funds, which we would splood with Waynesville. But it appears the money we got from the state will cover this, so we won't be in the out-of-pocket, so.
Good.
Okay? Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 18144. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the aviation project consultant supplemental agreement number one between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated.
Okay, got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
John makes a motion. Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Second reading, please.
Bill number 18144. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the aviation project consultant supplemental agreement number one between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated.
Okay, got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3317. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the aviation project consultant supplemental agreement number one between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Linda makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
John?
Yes.
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 Okay, 3.7, ordinance amending schedule three of title three. St. Robert code parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. Basically, we had an ordinance that has no parking on certain streets. One of the streets had a sign and was not in the ordinance, so they couldn't enforce. So the best way was just to add the street to the ordinance, so that's what this is for.
Now, there have been times when that's been kind of gone awry, or not gone awry, but allowed on weekends if there were parties as long as they were contained.
Yeah, there's a common sense judgment there.
Right.
But they didn't have too much common sense on that street and so.
Now, they're going to.
Yeah. So, but chief is working on, there's some other streets that came out of this and some other issues.
Where's Locust Court?
It's up in New Southon, right? Oh, Woodbridge.
Off of Z Highway, all the way down. Okay. Okay. So that's the street we're going to be adding. Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 18145. An ordinance amending schedule three of title three of the St. Robert city code. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Okay, got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, second reading?
Bill number 18145. An ordinance amending schedule three of title three of the St. Robert city code. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Got a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3318. An ordinance amending schedule three of title three of the St. Robert city code. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion. Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
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 Randy?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 3.8 is we're adding a company that wants to do credit. It's a transfer station in Hillary Franklin and Sun Tileco, so that they'll be dumped and then get built. We did all the others in a group last month, but now as we get more people that come in that are new people, they'll have to submit and get added.
Mayor, I can tell you that these people are very creditworthy. They're very longtime clients of mine. They're very substantial business. This is a good one for us.
Okay. Read it as a bill, please.
Number 18146. An ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account, St. Robert transfer station.
Got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Second reading?
Bill number 18146. An ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account, St. Robert transfer station.
Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion.
Second.
John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3319. An ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account, St. Robert transfer station.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Alan makes a motion. Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
John?
Yes.
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 Randy?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
3.9 is appointing Walter Reese to a position on the planning and zoning for a three-year tour. Read it as a bill, please.
For three-year tour?
Yep, three-year tour. And like the minnow.
Yeah.
Bill number 18147. An ordinance approving appointment to the St. Robert Planning and Zoning Commission to fill vacancy.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, John seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Charles? Yes.
Second reading please.
Bill number 18147, an ordinance approving appointment to the St. Robert Planning and Zoning Commission to fill vacancy.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Alan makes a motion, Linda seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
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 Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Read as an ordinance please.
Ordinance number 3320, an ordinance approving appointment to the St. Robert Planning and Zoning Commission to fill vacancy.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, John seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
John?
Yes. Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles? Yes.
Teresa? Yes.
3.10 is one of the first ones that we added. Three zero one, I believe.
Well, this is, these are last two are ordinance amendments that the chief had requested of me. In this one, we had placed in the old ordinance, if you look at the second page, the answer to charge within seven days, we have monthly court. And that didn't work time-wise, so we basically, on the date set forth in the ticket, so we've made them go to court on the date set forth in the ticket, not seven days, I don't know where that came from. So we're just cleaning up ordinances again.
Okay, read it as a bill.
Bill number 18148, an ordinance amending section 37503 over the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, uniform traffic tickets to be issued when vehicle illegally parked or, can we make that I and O there and do an amendment stopped?
Yes, get a motion for the amendment.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Teresa seconds, call roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Do a first reading on the amended.
Bill number 18148, an ordinance amending section 37503 over the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, uniform traffic tickets to be issued when vehicle illegally parked or stopped.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Second reading.
Bill number 18148, an ordinance amending section 37503 of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, uniform traffic tickets to be issued when vehicle illegally parked or stopped.
Okay, get a motion on the second reading. Alan makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, read as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3321, an ordinance amending section 37503 over the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, uniform traffic tickets to be issued when vehicle illegally parked or stopped.
Okay, get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Linda makes a motion.
Motion.
John seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
The next one is 040.
This is another amendment. They had in this for failure to appear for five days, a warrant or arrest we issued, kind of response to what has been happening in St. Louis area. We've extended that to 14 days for a warrant for arrest if they don't appear. After we send, the court clerk will send them a letter, they don't get it back in 14 days, then the warrant will be issued. It was five days, I don't think that's enough with the mailing and everything, so we extended it to 14 days.
Read as a bill.
Bill number 18149, an ordinance amending section 375040 of the chief of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, warning of arrests and upon failure to appear.
Linda, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna wait till you said any questions, if I was gonna answer. But is that 14 days from the date affixed on the ticket, or is that 14 days from?
The day of the letter.
It's 14 days from the date of the letter to then, basically.
But does, see, I don't understand how the court thing works. Thank God, I've never gotten a ticket.
The court clerk sends them a letter saying you didn't appear, we're gonna issue a warrant.
Okay, they didn't appear, so now they're giving them 14 days, okay.
So that we have substance to show, we just still didn't issue a warrant, and all of a sudden we're arresting some pregnant lady that's in a hospital.
Oh my.
Well, that'll have to pay.
Bill number 18. You've already get a vote on it.
I gotta get a motion and a second, so I got Michael to make a motion. Linda seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading please.
Bill number 18149, an ordinance amending section 37504 of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, warning of arrests and upon failure to appear.
Okay, get a motion on reading, or second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
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 Okay, read as an ordinance please.
Ordinance number 3322, an ordinance amending section 375040 of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, warning of arrests and upon failure to appear.
Okay, a motion on reading the ordinance, Alan and John seconds, clarification discussion call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
And Charles?
Yes.
Okay, wage and finance, I don't think we need a meeting. Public Works, I don't know if anything, emergency services, park committee, probably gonna meet after the first thing here. Okay, comments filed, I think we started with John, so we'll start with Teresa this week.
We have some issues, I'm not sure if we're gonna do them enclosed, or do you want to do them in open?
Do them closed.
Okay. Just for closed, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to recognize Mrs. Givens for the hard work that she has been doing in place of the city clerk and doing her regular job, which is taxi. And I would recommend that she be given some type of incentive because of her hard work. Now, this is just not this week, it's been like four or five months now that she has been working hard, not, you know, losing a beat. And you can work a hard, a good dog to duck, you know, and she's been working hard with no complaints.
Ashley, it's been since, what's her name left?
Yeah, since.
So it's been over.
Chris P., yeah.
Been over a year.
She's been working hard, man.
Okay.
So I just wanted to do that.
Okay.
The staff, yeah, the staff, as far as working, they've been working hard. And they've been keeping a positive attitude, except, well, I won't keep that in my mouth. Overall, they've been doing great, so I'd like to recognize the city staff, yes.
Okay. Linda?
I don't think so.
No?
That could change.
Want it out. Reggie?
Let's put it out.
Alan, do you have anything? Michael?
I just want to thank the Public Works for being out in the late, cold, dark night trying to reestablish the power that we lost for several powers.
We still got some polls that are gonna be changed out Thursday, Friday this week that are still damaged from outage. John?
No comments.
Okay. Okay, comments by administration. Anna?
Just one, I gave you the public notice of the election, municipal election. Obviously, second, also attached to you the positions of the elections. The first day of July.
December 11?
Yes.
Can you get it? Wait a minute. Don't we have to put this in the Dixon pilot or something?
I'm not gonna say nothing.
Well, they have to have three-year history or something, publishing public notices or some kind of rule of state statute. That's the only paper that's in the county that's got that, right? At this time.
Richland, doesn't Richland have one?
No.
They don't have that anymore? No.
It's on 11. We've got the Uranus. Well, I'd say Uranus have a paper.
It hasn't been in business long enough.
Okay. What else you got, Anna?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, anything on finance?
We're probably working on the study.
Okay. Okay, Chief Crickton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's shop with a cop time again, so I just want to talk about that for a few minutes and then we'll let you get on. Shop with a Cop event this year will be December 15th, again at Walmart at eight o'clock. This year, they, again, raised enough money. The plan is to have 204 children go through the event this year. Like I said, when we first started this over a decade ago, we were fortunate to do 100 kids, so this has truly grown. And I have to thank the Plask County law enforcement, all of them going out and making the public aware. And of course, the citizens and businesses of Plask County as well for all the donations, because without them, we could not make this happen. And I'd also like to thank Major Cooley again for spearheading this effort. Like I said, ever since he's taken it over, it's grown leaps and bounds. So big shout out to Major Cooley for his efforts. Like I said, it'll be on the 15th. They're in the process now, I believe, making contact with the schools and other entities that we use to pick the children. So on the 15th, if you have time, go out, it's quite something to see. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Steve's out, his wife.
I have a report from Steve.
Did you?
He emailed me one today. He wanted me to let you know there was a power outage on Sunday, the 25th, due to a bad cutout that burned the cross arm into. The cold weather and extreme winds made it difficult to bring the power back on because everybody was trying to bring it on at the same time. This has affected the power on the C heater and power outage we restored in small sessions over time, because everybody's trying to get everything off.
Well, they left all their furnaces, hot water heaters, everything.
Right.
And it tries to draw too much.
Friday, the 30th, there were two natural gas service lines were hit on Charlotte Circle due to a contractor boring cable lines. The gas department was able to make the repairs that day. And over the last weekend, the electric department had a few power outages due to lightning hitting a tree that was out of the power easement or our utility easement, and it took down the cross arms on the power.
Okay. Okay. Don's not here, I know he's been working on that. Jay?
Evening. The tonnage for November was 3,473.67. I got the DNR inspection report back this week, I was done on the 1st of November, and got a clean bill of health. And Gary from the Springfield Traders came by today and inspected, and he's gonna email me once he gets some material prices, so. That's all I have.
Okay, city attorney, guys?
Well, I've been seeing the mayor so much, my wife's almost jealous. But Ridge Creek is closing down over the sale, we've issued the money. Carrie reviewed the contract that we signed, that we executed back in August, it was contingent upon the PSC approval, which has occurred, and they're closing it down. She has noted that we have to fill in some exhibits, there's some more exhibits in there like personal property and stuff, but we can deal, clean that up with the receiver pretty easily. We did, what we did do to make sure today, I did a letter to Bruce Warren at Plask County Abstract, and asked him to do a title search by name to get everything that was owned by the predecessors that the receiver took for, to make sure that we get titled everything that we're entitled to easements and all of that. The mayor was worried to make sure we identified all easements, and we did that. What?
It'll go out tomorrow.
It'll go out tomorrow. And we've got a whole bunch of things going on. As you all noticed, the new paper has focused somewhat belatedly on our, the Uranus Examiner has been focusing on the 911 litigation. So whatever they want to know about that, I'll tell them about it. We're gonna continue the, we had what's called a corporate designee deposition of their, whoever they bring in, and they have to tell us what their position is. And halfway through that, we had to continue it because there was no, they didn't have the information they needed to have about taxes. One of the major issues about 911 is whether or not the tip has created new sales tax in that area. Well, when Mrs. Egan sold it to them, it was a hole in the ground, so I don't think any businesses have matriculated that. We have now obtained the tax information that they have, we've entered into a confidentiality agreement, so the individual businesses' taxes won't be made available to competitors, so you know what their sales are. So we're gonna move that along. And then finally, the mayor's given me permission to go play bridge in the Christmas tournament tonight, so I'm gonna do that at 6:00. If everybody will, and I don't believe you have anything. Most of the mayor has something.
Anita?
Yes, I've been working with a couple of gentlemen that's in the military transition group. Mayor wanted to have the supply room in the very back by the garage, the Public Works one, set up an inventory system, and one of these gentlemen has a logistics, and the other one's a clerk, so I took them back and it didn't skitter them off. So one of them will start in January and one will start in February, so mayor's excited about that, we have just six months each, so that'll be.
We've tried and tried to get that in our budget.
Right. I got another annexation on Ridge Creek to start processing. It was a military family that lives overseas, and they just got the information back to us, economic development had been really busy with that. CDBG, we have been sent out our tribal letters, I got the green cards back saying they received them, and we haven't gotten new response letters back yet for many of them. And the 15th of December will be the last day for their response on that, then we can move forward with the environmental, that's part of it. Be like, and working with FEMA and FEMA on the financing of the transfer station answering some, or the treatment plant on financing questions on what we're wanting to do with that. And then they had a couple of questions about some administrative things we've done early on hiring Jeff, but we have all the documentation, so we're just waiting for their letter back and then to prove that. DA contacted me, they're still talking about their little expansion back there, and they're wanting to get some signage done on the sign out here, so I've worked with him a couple of times. Last week, we were swamped with American Water and Co. UTEC, it was a great success by anybody's standard. American Water was very happy, they came here and we worked with them for three days. And so that was just, honestly, it was, it went very smoothly, I don't think you could ask for anything smoother, so. Other than that, Mayor?
Other than that, that's a whole lot.
Yes.
She's been working hard.
Mrs. Anita, has DMV got in contact with you about the little space that they were trying to get?
No.
Number five priority.
Okay, the next regular board of aldermen meeting will be December 4th.
That's today.
Yeah, that's today. So it'll be December 18.
18, yeah.
18?
Somebody drew all my, did you do that?
Mr. Wallace, if you'd introduce your students, we'd appreciate that.
Happy to be here tonight. Alex, over there. Kayla, Jamie, and AJ, Jordan, and David, for the night.
Okay.
Thank you.
What schools? What schools you got? What school?
Dover.
Dover, all right.
Might have.
All right.
Oh, wow.
Waynesville.
Okay.
What, can't hear them up there.
Waynesville.
Waynesville, okay.
Good job, everyone.
So with that, we do have a closed session, meeting being closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter 16 dash 021, section one legal, section two real estate, and section three personnel. A motion to go into executive session. Linda makes a motion, Teresa seconds, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
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 Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
He is mixed up.
And if we can come back as quickly as possible, soon as they get the cameras out of here.